Come on.
Oh, yes, I'm 400,000, so now there's a measure of about 100,000.
170,000.
Yes.
Small district, single member district.
All right. Want to do the roll call?
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
We have a call.
If we could please stand for the pledge. Michael, Mr. Hanley, could you lead us, please?
National allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Speakers. How many speakers we got?
We have six speakers, Mayor. Number one is David Kozinski, followed by Mike Hanley, followed by Bob Hartman.
Okay. Well, he'd only name the three, he'll catch them up as he goes. Mic's on on. Switch on the top.
Right there where your thumb is.
Test, all right, go.
Good evening, council, David Kozinski, 6411 Hollitt Trail. Here to speak on behalf of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association. Two weeks ago, I was called out on an article that was published in our Wagler. Think everybody kind of remembers this. I was told that the content was wrong, the phone was ringing off the hook, thinking there must have been some kind of error in editing, because I'm very careful with my writing, I write for a living. I ran out and proofread it. And I looked at the article, and there's a clarification at the beginning, says below is a reprint from the town of Southwest Ranches, Southwest Rancher. The paragraph in question reads, "For properties such as those located along Sterling Road, where a guardrail is in place, comma, there is no place for residents to place their bulk. These residents may locate their generated bulk across the street from them." And when I wrote that, I went to your own magazine, this is the publication you guys send out. And there's an article on page seven in the September 27th publication. The article is Code Enforcement In You, written by Robert Solera, the Code Enforcement Officer. When I was questioned on this, I went right to Robert, and I asked Robert, "Did you write this?" And he said, "Yes." In that, the question in the article says, "For properties such as those located along Sterling Road, comma, where a guardrail is in place, there is no place for residents to place their bulk. These residents may locate their generated bulk across the street from them." It's verbatim, word for word. I was told this was wrong. I asked Andy about this, and Andy said he'll get to the bottom of it. He said it was poorly written. So what was written in the Wagler was a verbatim publication of what came from your own magazine. So it was 100% accurate based upon what Robert wrote. And if my article was wrong, then certainly Robert's writing must be wrong. So I think the calling out that this was wrong, that was wrong.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 138th Ave. Told you a long time ago, don't yell at you guys. In any case, last night Pembroke Pines had an agenda item that I talked to a few of you guys about last night, that they had an agenda item to vote on an RFP, granting an RFP to a particular engineering company for a project that is not well-defined as you should do in an RFP. And I kind of believe there's motives behind that. The RFP was for what they're calling a water loop for Pembroke Pines Water and Sewer that will go, hold on, Water, that will go out to 27 on Sheridan, come up Sheridan on the east side, according to specifics in the document. They didn't specify which side of Griffin Road, but they're going to come tie in somewhere on Griffin Road. And in my mind, that's probably in front of Masters Academy, because I remember when they built Masters, they ran the water right up to Griffin Road. Now, the justification for this is to improve water quality. So what does that say about the water they're giving their customers now? I'm not even going to go there. I don't think it's for water quality. And I talked to Andy today, and I don't believe they've contacted us on this at all, even though they're going to come down Griffin Road. Now, in knowing what Pines attempted to do to us in the last legislative session during the Broward Legislative Delegation meetings, I believe that's their motive for this pipe. Bergeron doesn't need it, he's almost built out. If you drive around back there, he's finished in the area that's right behind me, say, call it the north side of Sterling Road. He's finished, though, there's no place else for him to build. Over on where he's building that new distribution center, he's still got some land there, but not that's going to warrant running water all the way up to Griffin Road. So my thinking is, they're thinking ahead on all this land they're trying to grab from us off of, between Sterling and Griffin, out west, and they're planning for it. Now, I don't know if we have any opportunities to stop this pipe from going in, or at least from coming down Griffin Road. If they need to tie in for a loop, tie in at the end of Sterling Road. I remember when they put that pipe in, that pipe goes to Sterling and 27. If they want to improve water quality, go in through their own land, in their part of their town, and not through Southwest Ranches. They're playing dirty with us yet again. And I don't know how, I don't know if we can stop them due to their right-of-way access and the rights of gaining right, gaining access to right-of-ways, rights-of-way. But there's something going on here that I don't trust. And they're not being nice, and from what I understand, they're not talking. So not sure how we can block this, but I would really encourage the council and the staff and administration to, to do what they can to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Hanley. Mayor, before Mr. Hanley speaks, just want to let you know, staff did some additional research on that today, and Russell can address it during the administrator's comments, if that's okay with the council.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Hanley.
Mike Hanley, 50th Place and 205 Avenue. I'm concerned about Griffin Road, there's talk of expanding it. I see that some idiot that marks the road signs out there where the dam is, Griffin Road at 199 expands into four lanes. The northernmost lane, running east to west, is on, the northernmost lane of that is straight road, all the way from 184 out, and probably east of that. However, the sign says, "Merge Left." The left lane is an extension that goes south and then comes back to the north. Why wouldn't it be Merge Right, or Merge to the North, or Merge What? It doesn't make any sense. And for me to be going straight on the northernmost lane towards the west, and then have to turn, go Merge to the south lane to come back to the north lane, is idiotic. That sign should be taken down and changed from Merge Left to Merge Right. Secondly, I'd like to request that the northernmost, or I mean the westernmost lane of Griffin, of Weston, when it goes from north to south and Merge, Weston Road comes into Griffin, that that westernmost lane should not be straight through to Dykes Road, which forces it to merge into one lane soon as it crosses Griffin. I live out west, the only way I can get home is on Griffin Road. And why should I have to sit at that stoplight every time I come to Western, Weston and Griffin, and sit there and wait for some idiot that's only going to Dykes Road, going south, one car maybe out of 20 at 5:00? They have three lanes turning left. If you come down Griffin Road to the east, particularly when the schools are getting out, you may spend a long time trying to get all the way across 75. You get stopped at Bonaventure, you get stopped at Griffin, Weston Road. You get stopped going up, trying to get over 75, and you get stopped at Volunteer. It's idiotic, but Weston can come and make four lanes turning left, or one going south, and they get through gangbusters every light. We don't, especially when the school's out. You may get stopped all the way back to 199th and have to wait for Griffin and Weston lights to change over and over and over again before you get through. I'd like to see more efficient traffic for the people that live in the western part of Southwest Ranches. It bothersome. Thank you.
Mike, next speaker, Mario.
Mario's with Robert at the moment, you want to skip to the next?
We'll come back to him, Tommy Pender.
Gay Chapels, and then last speaker is Mario.
Mario's with Robert Solera, talking about-
Would you like Gay Chapels to go first?
Yeah, I'd like Gay to go first.
Okay.
Mario's the lead for them.
My name's Gay Chapels, and I live out on Dykes Road and Sterling. And the reason I said that is because I'm concerned about what's right next door to Town Hall. And I came in and talked to Robert, and he said what that is, is a nursery. Here's my problem, it's on one acre, it was a residential home. All of our nurseries, almost all of our nurseries in our town is on vacant land, and there throughout the town. Is this now something that we're going to be dealing with? Because he is next to a resident, he's across from a resident, that street is a dead end, and it's a residential street. Now he's opening up a full-blown nursery with the house. I'm assuming that house is going to be the retail store. And there's going to be a lot of traffic on there, right at the bottleneck, right there, and they're going to have to go into that street to get to that nursery. Now, what's next? All along Dykes Road? Going to buy those houses? I mean, we have some houses with nurseries in the back, along Dykes. But they're low-key, most of them are wholesalers, and they didn't fill in their property four feet with hard pan fill. This thing over here, and I guess the way they got approved was they put a berm. Well, we all know what happens to the berm. It gets approved, and then it gets, it disappears. And there's at least a two-and-a-half-foot drop to his next-door neighbor. And he's hard fill, there's not going to be any water going through anything. That water is going to run off onto his neighbors. And if he has a swale with a berm, it's going to trap him there. But I am totally against what happened there. I have no problem with nurseries, I support nurseries. But I don't support going into a residential area, buying a house for $400,000 and creating a business and dumping a lot of traffic on a dead-end road. It would be no different than going into anywhere in Sunshine Ranches, or let's go down Green Meadows. Those are all one-acre homes in Green Meadows. And they could pick any house, buy it, $400,000, they're in business. Fill it up with hard fill and put in a berm. And just so you know, I have an experience, guy bought the one-acre house next to me, came in with hard fill, didn't get a permit.
Go ahead.
Put it in, and he drops off at my property line, two-and-a-half feet. Now, Robert has addressed it, code's addressed it, and the outcome is, now what do we do? And he's put a trailer on the other side, and it's filled in. So my point is this, they can have a nursery, but they have to blend with the neighborhood. And that's not blending with the neighborhood. Take a look at it when you drive out. If it didn't hit you in the face, then you must be tired and you're not looking. And people are going to be driving in there. You're worried about Griffin Road?
All right, we got to wrap it up.
Okay. You're worried about the traffic that's going into the ones on Griffin Road? The nurseries, Ricky Spears and the others? Trust me, this one's going to be a nightmare.
Last two speakers, I don't know which one of you guys want to go in.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I resign at 4521 Southwest 133 Ave, Mario Tappanis. I speak on behalf of my neighbors. This nursery that's being put up there, I was just made aware of some code changes August 2017. My map on your website is 2016. The star that we were talking about, they've taken it out. I don't know how it got voted, it surely wasn't voted by us. So my question is, we have a commercial business in a residential area. You all live in Southwest Ranches. We all moved here for what, peace, quietness? How would you like to have that in front of your house? Or when you turn in, you have equipments. Right now, they're still working, it's almost, what, 7:30? You hear bulldozer going, you hear trees being chopped. It's not a very good eyesore for anybody in this neighborhood. Obviously, we can't change what you guys agreed to let happen, but I am asking you guys if we can somehow come to an agreement where our neighborhood still remains as a residential area, where it still feels good to drive down your street, and, you know, you're paying these taxes, which you're not going to get from him, because now you're not going to get the full value tax from that property. That property sold for $590,000, so you won't be getting that tax value. So is there anything that you guys could suggest? Or we can, I'm going to plan a meeting with Robert next week and our neighbors, see if we can implement. I brought to your attention if he could use the easement on your entrance there, instead of 133. That truck has to go down to the end of the street, make a U-turn, come back. Our roads are going to be destroyed. You see what's on Griffin, all the sod, all the junk, sand, that's what I spent $500,000 for. It's sad. None of you guys are going to see it, because none of you guys live here. So I want you to think about what we can do to better all these people that are the people that voted for you guys to be here. Because those are the same people that are going to vote again when you guys run. So maybe you guys might want to think about redoing something with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Final speaker, Mayor.
Tommy Pender, 4511 Southwest 133 Ave. I shared a fence with you right here, thank you for fixing it incidentally after eight months. I got a couple pictures, I just want to sit down and ask you a few questions. I'd like to know, you know, was there environmental side plant? There must have been somewhat of one, because he did put a silk screen up on part of it. But as you see on the pictures there, if he'd have put it up on my side, all that stuff wouldn't have went through my fence, and, you know, I might stand to lose like 50 cocoa pumps now because of it. I worked for South Broward Drainage District for 10 years back in the 90s, I was an inspector. And only one time, and I've called, spoke with a chief engineer, I spoke with zoning, and I never got a straight answer at all. I'm now a code officer for City of Hollywood, I've been there for 15 years. So I kind of know how things work and how things go. And like when I was with South Broward, whenever we did a fill plan, there was like a fill spec, there was cross-sections, there was details on how a berm goes. And I told this guy last week, the berm that he had like a little test area for, that, yeah, that that wasn't going to work, you know, from what I remember. So finally, I guess the guy came out the next day, he painted it out, it looks like it, we might get what we're supposed to have. But, you know, the thing with our house is like, I feel like our price of our house just dropped 100 grand over this, is what I feel like for right now. If we tried to sell it tomorrow, we'd probably lose money on it, because no one, you know, wants to look at what's there. He's cut every single tree down that's there. With Hollywood, if you cut a tree down, hardwood tree, you got to replace it with at least three palms or another type of hardwood. There's one tree left on that whole property. I don't know how you could allow that. What's the agreement on that? What does he have to put back there? 100 date palms and containers? How's that going to work? So again, like what Mario was saying, we need to meet with you, find out what we can do with this, and go forward. Thank you.
That's it. Okay. The only thing I'm going to say to that is, Mario, stay in touch with Robert, or Andy, or whatever. We'll continue to keep an eye on it. As we have issues, whether it's traffic, or nuisance, or noise, or whatever, don't hesitate to file a complaint, because code enforcement can work in other ways, so. No, I saw it parked in the middle of the street. Okay. Anyhow, can't have a dialogue like this back and forth, no problem. All right, so board member comments. See, no board member comments, council member comments. Steve, you want to go first?
Yeah, I'll go first. I just want to wish everybody, because we won't be having a meeting then, I wish everybody a happy Easter, a safe Easter, and Passover also. And the other thing I wanted to bring up to council was, I would like to make a recommendation that Robert Sorota would like to sit on the Rural Arts Board. So if you don't disagree with that. As an at-large appointee.
Okay. I don't have an issue, I don't know where the number's at, but how about the rest of you? Okay, we're all good.
We're good, Robert?
Yeah, I don't-
Well, it's an at-large.
What's the count on there?
Mayor, that would, that would put the count at six.
Yep, yeah.
But I know they're, they're looking to continue to expand that board, they're looking for a little bit more input, so I don't think that that'll be an issue going forward. And you've had, you've had six on that board previously.
Okay. I think it was seven before, but it got lowered to five.
I don't know if it got lowered, but it just, we didn't have enough people.
Here's a question, how many are currently on the board? Five, okay. How many does the resolution say can be on that board?
I don't know.
Okay, if that resolution says seven, we have no issue. If the resolution says five, next week we'll bring back the resolution to make it six.
Well, yeah, I'm proposing that it be expanded as necessary.
No, no, exactly, what Keith's pointing is, if the resolution says something different, we need to bring a resolution forward to fix it, that's all.
Okay, so we just need to check that out and then bring it back.
All right. So we're going to find out, either way, we'll get it done.
We'll know in two minutes, I'll tell you the answer.
Okay.
Okay.
Two minutes, you got to wait, Robert.
You're still up.
Oh, that's, that's all I had.
That's all you have?
Yeah.
Steve, you want to go next?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to address the speakers and the issue that you all have brought forth. You know, I wish I was sitting here and I had a good answer for you, a way to stop it, a way to make it go away, I don't have that to offer you. But the issue that you're encountering is not an issue isolated to yourself. I can speak from my own experience, that my neighbor, years ago, brought in an incredible amount of fill. The back quarter of my property, as these folks well know, because I bring it up all the time, rainy season is almost constantly underwater the whole time. So I feel your pain, I understand what you're saying. And, you know, it's unfortunate to me that while this town was built on an agricultural base, I mean, let's face it, that's what, much of it was, years and years ago, that that agricultural base is being used, and I believe abused, for commercial businesses at this point. And it's a struggle for us, not that we don't want to solve the problem. I guarantee you, everybody up here wants to solve your problem. The struggle here is being able to come up with a fair way of protecting the agricultural interests that are legitimate in town from the commercial, you know, companies that come in and use those rules to abuse it and to take advantage of it. And so that's something we need to still work on. And my sincere, it doesn't do you any good, and I understand that, but my sincere, you know, sympathies and frustration go with you, because I've experienced it as well. And it's something that we as a town are struggling and working to fix, so. I did want to make a couple other comments, just to, this is the time we get to talk, so I just wanted to bring the council up to speed on a couple of things that have been going on. One is, we brought to my attention, I think some of you may have been included on the initial email, and home on Volunteer, Kenny Williamson and his wife. And they, they have struggled with some development next to them, which has, I believe, taken advantage of our code and our building and zoning rules. And basically, basically, I'm not going to name names or anything for the, because, because I have not spoken to them yet to hear their side. So, but from what I have heard, it sounds like a situation where the idea is we build without permits, and what we get caught on, we pay the double permit fee, but it's still, you know, it's still, it's cheaper to do it that way than to actually wait for the permits, get all the permits, have all the inspections, because you know what, we don't get caught on everything. So what I would like to see directed to the-
This, let me jump in just for a quick second. This reminds me so much of the fill issue where we require, if they're bringing in to have it removed.
Right, right. And I want to do something, one of the things that I would, I would like for the Drainage Committee to look at is that if there is, if somebody, so basically today, somebody starts work on a project without a permit, and it's discovered and reported, they pay a double permit fee for that. Okay? I think that's reasonable. What I would, what I would, because anybody can make a mistake, anybody can try once to kind of skirt the rules. I get that. So you pay a penalty for it, and you move on. However, if somebody is making a practice of this, and has made a business decision that it's cheaper and to do this than it is to try it, where they're working on a project, and time after time after time after time, they go without permits, and they get caught on certain of them and not on others, they're abusing the system. So what I would like for the committee to look at and to review is that whole double permit thing. We checked with code, and you can do a maximum of four times the permit fee. So I, you know, for a single use, I have no problem with the way it is. I think that's, I think that's, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, swat a hammer with a sledgehammer. But for a situation where it happens a third time, I think we may want to do triple. You know, a fourth time maybe triple. Time after that, quadruple, and stick at that, so that, so that there's a little bit more penalty to it. But I'm not proposing that tonight. I want to send it to the Drainage Committee and have them take a look at it, have them consider it. A lot of times, they come up with a better idea than what I've got, and so I want to send that to them. But I wanted you all to be aware that this-
I'm good with that.
That this was in the works, and if you had any feedback on that tonight for the Drainage Committee, I would welcome that.
Yeah, if I could jump in, Steve, thanks for bringing this up. You're talking about just fill and clearing?
No, 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 I'm talking about building, plummings, plumbing permits, electrical permits.
Okay, but that's beyond, that's why I'm a little hazy, that's beyond the purview of the Drainage Committee, correct?
It is, I don't know where else to send it, I want-
Okay, no, I'm just curious.
Yes, you are correct.
I'm just trying to see which direction you're going.
It normally would be beyond their purview.
I think, I think you're not putting enough teeth into it. On a repeat offender, I think if they know they have to remove everything that they've done and bring it back to zero, that will send a very clear message, because even four times might be the cost of business.
Right. I welcome that comment, because that mirrors my sentiment. I just don't wanna go crazy out of the bat, but I...
I don't think going crazy. If it's somebody who repeatedly does this, and what that criteria would be, that's a matter of discussion.
Right.
And we'd throw it to the Drainage Committee for that. But I think if a plumber, or a contractor, let's just say a contractor, puts in a whole system, and this is like their fourth offense, fifth offense, whatever it is, and if they know they have to remove it, I don't think they're gonna do it again.
Right.
You know, I honestly think...
Let me, let me jump in here just a second. And, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong here. Whose ever property it's on, and the property owner's the one that's gonna get in trouble here, not the contractor doing the work.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, so...
Which is, which I believe is the right...
Well, it's the only hammer we have.
Right. But I think it's, I think it's the right.
I don't have a problem with it. Listen...
It's usually the owner, the property owner, that's making these decisions.
Is there, is there a way, and I realize there's ways to get around this, but is there a way to ban a contractor? I'm asking a question. I'm not pointing to anybody...
Yeah, I don't know. It's a good question that maybe the, can be brought up in that discussion.
There's obviously ways to get around it through shell corporations and things of that nature. But if you've got somebody that's just repeatedly, repeatedly, you know, opening up a new corporation every other week, you know...
I think, I'm not talking about this specific, I'm, sorry, go ahead.
No, do you do it combined? Like, say this contractor has done several jobs throughout the town, and he's got a bad reputation for doing it. First of all, you can't ban anybody. I mean, people are allowed to hire whoever they want, you know, whether we like them or not. We don't have that, you know, nowhere in our charter that I know of.
Right.
So...
Well, I don't know. I'm thinking state law, county law.
I think, I think making somebody, you know, after, and you're not gonna let them go four and five times. I mean, you know, what's the point in that? Some people have money to burn. They don't really care. But if you make somebody take something out, anytime you have to redo anything costs more than when you do it.
Right.
So...
I don't, like I said, I agree with the sentiment.
But you can't ban a contractor.
I think what I would say is, ask Keith or Robert the biggest penalty we can do.
Well, so I did ask Robert the biggest penalty. That's four times the permit fee. That's the biggest penalty. But I'm, so I'm not really looking to, you know, debate it here. I wanted to make sure we were all on board before I sent it there.
Yeah, yeah, we're on board.
And it sounds like we are.
We are.
And...
But I don't, I think I'm with Dee or whatever. I don't wanna waste second or third time. Get them a second time and slam them.
Well, here's, here's the thing, you know. I think we, I wanna be cautious that we don't go from too far this way to too far that way. You know what I mean? There are situations, we talked about one, you know, somebody comes in and they try and get away with something, right? And so they don't get, they don't pick up a couple of permits, like they should, and it's discovered, and so they come in, and then they, you know, they get those two or three permits that they should've gotten up front and they didn't. Well, to me, okay, there was somebody that did the wrong thing, they should pay double permits two or three times, and now hopefully they've learned their lesson. But it's them, if they then come back again later, like now we know they know, and now they're just trying to get away with it, that's the situation that I'm most concerned about. You know, I don't, I'm not here to be the policeman, you know. I wanna, I wanna make sure, like anything else, that we, those that are attempting to use and abuse the good nature of this town are penalized. Those people that are, you know, weekend warriors, trying to put up something real quick, and, you know, I want them, I want them to pay a price. I want them to pay a price, but not, I'm not looking to, you know, to...
But most contractors aren't gonna do that. If they've got a good reputation, they know...
I think a lot of these situations are not contractors.
Well, then they're trying to do it on their own. And the thing is, you move into this town, you move into Weston, you move into Cooper City, wherever you're going, it is your responsibility to know the rules of the town.
I don't dispute that.
You know, so...
Well, so I bring it up, you know, if we bring them bigger hammer than I'm comfortable with, you know, then, then maybe we bring a bigger hammer than I'm comfortable with. But, you know, we'll get, we'll get back the recommendation. Freddie, do you have a comment? Go ahead, Freddie.
Yeah, well, I've got a situation. What you're talking about happened right now on my street. A guy went in there, and he put a big platform on a set of wheels. I don't, he's not claiming that it's a trailer or nothing, but he built a house there. We cited him for building a house without a permit. But Robert, you know what I'm talking about? Did we go any further with that? Did he have to get a septic tank permit also? Are those things, that's what I wanna make sure, that those things are tied together. So, you know, we got a health problem there.
We do. Yeah, I see, like, this situation we're talking about here fits right in with what you're saying. There is what's supposed to be a garage there with no plumbing in it, and yet there is a pipe this big coming out of the concrete from the bottom. Clearly, it's set up for a sewer, a septic, a septic tank. And it's not gonna go in this weekend, it's not gonna go in next weekend, but probably six months from now, when everything dies down, boom, it'll go in one weekend, you know? And who knows where it'll be put? Who knows whether it'll be put in right or wrong? You know, who knows if it'll ever be looked at? And so, those are the situations that, you know, yes, if we can get them to pull that thing back out, and you know what? Pull the pipe out of the foundation of that building, I'm all for it. 'Cause that's a situation where somebody is methodically attempting to abuse the code of our town.
Yeah, I fully agree, and I think until you make the person, whether it's fill, whether it's, you know, converting living quarters, whatever it is, until you make them undo it to move forward, it's just the cost of doing business, you know.
I...
And I realize I'm probably preaching to the choir.
Yep.
You know, and I think we're all on the same page.
We are.
You know, with that.
All right. So that was, I wanted to bring that forth, because it's something that clearly is a matter of policy, so it's gonna come before the council, and I wanted you all to be aware of it.
Let me share with the audience just a little bit of information. This is the only opportunity we have during council member comments to discuss or share anything going on internally within town. Other side, outside of here, we cannot speak any town business together at any time, anywhere. So, this is the only opportunity we have, and we have two meetings a month, so this is the time we can air this stuff out. So, other than that, we're not allowed to talk about it, or you go to jail.
Or at least pay a big fine.
I'd just like to share with residents that haven't been...
Thanks, yeah. So that's why we do some of our... Different, different part of town, different resident. I met with Walt and Deana Butler this past week, had a good, good conversation with them. They are down on 63rd between 188th and 190th, and they are having incredible amount of nursery traffic coming out of the area next to them. Huge, huge commercial business on many, many acres down there. If I said there were 20 trucks there, I would be way underestimating the number of trucks that come out of there. So, believe me when I tell you, I understand the situation. So anyway, I spoke with them, you know, they're coming out on a public road. It's a very small road. As you all are aware, you're well aware of that road. We've had it for other discussions. What we can do there is, we can put up a stop sign to at least stop them. They're coming out of that road, not even stopping, not even slowing down. I stood there in front of their house, I watched it happen myself, and that was just a random sample over 30 minutes as we were having the conversation, come flying out of there with those trucks, because it's a relatively, I don't wanna say, the traffic on the road is not, is not major, so they just, they just come right out, and there's bushes and things there, and it's an accident waiting to happen. But anyhow, so, we're fortunate that one little corner, a lot of that space is actually on 345, so we have no jurisdiction to put up any traffic control devices in there. But this one corner is in Southwest Ranches, not private, it's public, and so we do have the ability to put a stop sign there, so we're recommending that a stop sign get put on there.
What do we have to do to expedite that? Andy, you got a clue what we need to do to get a stop sign out?
We're already in process, Mayor.
Okay.
I just wanted you all to be aware.
Yeah.
So that's going on. And then the last thing, in that same conversation, you all probably, probably remember that we have had on multiple occasions conversations about a, putting in a access road in that area that is south of 63rd, west of 185th...
All the way to Sharon.
East of 190th, all the way to Sharon. In speaking to some of the neighbors there, even one of the nurseries, you know, I gotta, I'm gonna stop for a second and just say this, that we need to be careful not to put all nursery owners into the same bucket, because we have some super nursery owners here that are very conscious of their neighbors, very considerate of their neighbors, and go out of their way to...
Fix problems.
To fix the problem, and to do whatever they can to alleviate. And this is one of them. Tadalian Nurseries is one of them. Spoke to Daniel there, super guy, and was willing to do whatever we could do to help alleviate this problem. And I think, and what I'd like to do is get a town hall meeting going to get all the nursery owners that are in that area, and some residential owners, I think it's almost all nursery, out there, and have a serious discussion about what it would take to get a road, a paved road put in there, to raise their property values, and to, so it should be good for them, and so that the traffic, rather than coming up into Southwest Ranches and exiting, finally just exit right on Sheridan, and we call it a day, and get all that traffic off of the neighborhood roads. So, I'm gonna be doing, I just, once again, wanted you all to be aware, I'm gonna be working with Andy and the administration to try and get that, those notifications sent out, and that town hall set up, and would love it if you all, I know you all would wanna be there.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. So, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate the heads up. Freddie?
I'm good.
You're good. Gary, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Hey, thank everybody for coming. Just, I'll be brief, couple things. One is, wish everybody a happy Easter and Passover coming up. We'll be meeting after that. And just a fun thing, this Saturday is the big Rolling Oaks Easter egg hunt. 5,000 eggs, seven-foot-tall bunny, tip to the ears, to the toenails. It's gonna be there, all age groups, from barely walking up to teenagers. Golden Eggs are involved in that, and I urge everybody to come and bring their Easter basket. Petting zoo. There's gonna be a light brunch served at 11 o'clock. This is on Saturday, the 24th, and it's at the barn at the Rolling Oaks Park. You go right down 178th, make a left midway down, and you can't miss it. It's a lot of fun. It's our, I think, our ninth annual one that we've had, and I urge everybody to go, to go to this, 'cause it's a lot of fun, and the kids have a great time. The other thing I wanna mention is regarding what's going on next door. The residents that came in tonight, thank you. You know, I don't wanna sit here and tell you I feel your pain, and, you know, you want action. We're gonna do everything we can to make sure people comply with what is going on, without stepping on everybody's toes, because they are allowed to operate as a business. To what that extent is, that's gonna remain between Andy and code enforcement with Robert. We're all, I think we're all in lockstep on that.
We are.
And we're going to be carefully watching that. And you're right, we have that on all our streets. I have it on my street. Down the street from me, we have a huge nursery. It's like 40 acres. It's now operating round the clock with trucks, tree trucks, and hydraulic lifts and all that. So, yeah, I share your pain. I, you know, we're there. And we are, we've recently passed legislation that has not allowed mulching operations to go on at nursery levels, and we're going to be reviewing more, more stuff as things go on, coming through with it. So, I just wanted to mention, everybody, this is a process. It is not overnight, but we are working towards it, and we do listen to the residents very well up here. So I just want everybody to understand that. Okay? And that's about all I got for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. A couple of things, most of you know I've spoken with Mario for a day, day and a half, or whatever. We went to Central Broward, chatted with Michael Crowley. We met with the administrator here. So, we are going to stay on top of this and help police, police it with you. Because you all do live on that block, we're not gonna know, town hall obviously is 8:30 to 5:00. So, we're not gonna know any after-hours activity, that kind of stuff. So, if you all will keep us in the mix related to code enforcement stuff, or disturbance, or, you know, that truck in the middle of the street that I saw today, sitting there, we will address it through code moving forward. The other thing I want you to know, though, is that code enforcement is a tool, but it's a little bit slow, not because of them, but because of what the law allows. So if you notify somebody, the time runs, it's 60, 90, or 120 days sometimes till something actually gets fixed related to a problem. So, we do have, the first Tuesday of every month, there's code hearings in this room right here. So, if you all wanna know or get a feel of how the code stuff works, you're on the next block, feel free to come by here sometime at 9:00 on a Tuesday morning, the first Tuesday of the month, and this is where code is held, the meeting. So, it's, so we have our own magistrate here, and, you know, they hear the argument or whatever, and make a ruling on a complaint on items. So, but anyhow, we will police that with you, and try to make the impact as minimal as possible. One of the things I think we might ask is maybe if he could put a hedge up around it. I don't know that he wants to hide his place, but, you know, just, just another thought or idea in the process. The other thing, changing pages here now, the other thing I'd like, let the council know, that I was contacted by someone, asked me if the town would be interested in renting out their five acres across from Tom Thumb where the park is to store some dirt. The site that they're working on, if you all are familiar with Weston Road, where Walgreens is, is behind Walgreens. It's seven or eight acres. They need to, they're building, is it an ALF? Andy?
Yes, Mayor.
ALF, eh?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So they're building ALF and another facility there. So they've got to dig it out. The bad, the muck or the stuff they're not going to reuse are gonna haul off and dump somewhere else, but the dirt that they're going to reuse, the backfill, after they dig out, do the footers, foundational, they'd like to store on our site. I didn't read the letter, but Andy just passed out their, what is this, letter of intent?
Yes, Mayor. We got that late this afternoon.
Okay, so we just got this late this afternoon. Obviously, Keith has to jump in here and draw up a contract, and makes, tweak this a little bit, but it's basically a, a lease for a year, so to speak?
Yeah, I would call it a lease.
A lease for...
They, they need a location to store their fill, most of which will go back to the, to the job site. They're doing a sub-basement, so they need to excavate quite a bit of fill. The muck they're gonna dispose of, it's only clean fill they wanna save over there, because they will be returning the majority of it to the site.
They also mentioned that if we had a need for any fill, to let them know, there wouldn't be any additional charge. But the price they'll pay us is $60,000 for a year, and month to month after that, at $5,000 a month. So, the other thing we asked for was 50% of it up front, and the balance in six months, the other 50%. So we're not waiting for payment. They're gonna pay us up front, we don't wanna be chasing them month to month. And so anyhow, I kinda want you guys' input, or is it okay? Can we direct Keith to move forward, or...
Yeah, all the D first, and then you...
Yeah, all the D first, and then you, Freddie. Go ahead.
Sounds like easy money. Who walks away from $60,000?
No, there are other issues that need to be looked at on it, on the surface. It's like golf courses, okay? A lot of municipalities own golf courses, but the minute you allow a private individual to pay you money for that golf course, it then becomes taxable. Okay? So, the municipality is going to have to look at this before making a rash decision, to understand the consequences of it, because there are tax implications directly associated the minute you accept money for allowing fill on the property.
Okay, so we charge them tax?
No, ad valorem tax. Your property will go on the tax rolls.
Town-owned property is going to go on the tax rolls, because you're putting dirt on it? And removing it?
Because you are renting it out to a private property, a private party. Yes. It's the law.
It'll go on the, well, you'll have to explain that one to me, because I don't get that at all.
Because you're renting it to a private individual for private gain.
So, 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 at what, at what?
So, I'm not saying not to do it.
No, no, I understand it.
I'm saying you just need to understand the...
Yeah, I understand it, but, but the catch is, if it were to go on the tax rolls, since we've never had anything on the tax roll related to town-owned property, how do you come up with a number, or how does the property appraiser come up with a number related to the tax?
It becomes valued as the standard value of vacant five acres in the town. So, if it's 200,000 acre, 250 acre, that's what will go on the tax rolls, so. Now, again, I'm giving you worst-case scenarios, because you're bringing it up at a meeting, but I just want you to understand, it's not just a free $60,000, there's sales...
All right, so it sounds like a Marty Care question.
It's going to be a Martin Sherwood question.
So, we have two Marty's questions.
Counselor Keith is correct. We need time to look into the tax impact. It could be pro rata, it could be the entire parcel, we're not sure. As Town Administrator Burns indicated, came very late this evening, and we haven't had the opportunity to address it. We would come back to you quickly with our results, as soon as we get them.
What's quick to you guys? You said quickly, what's quickly?
Well, Mayor, if I may, you have a meeting again in two weeks.
No, I get that.
And so, this is something, if the council directs us this evening...
Yeah.
To continue looking at this process, which...
I don't know how we can't. Why we wouldn't?
I don't disagree with you. So, Marty, we'll start to look at those numbers, get a sense of where those costs fall, and we will certainly update you all throughout the process, if the numbers continue to look good favorably to you all independently, because I obviously can't discuss it with you as a group.
No, like, up here we can as a group, but nowhere else.
But I will, I will keep the council appraised of where we are in this process, and if the consensus appears there, then we'll draw up an agreement and have that back before you at your next meeting.
Okay, Freddie had a question.
Well, listen, I guess...
Okay, state, go ahead.
Yeah. From what I understand, what we're saying is, they're going to store fill on that five acres.
Correct.
Well, I understand it's going to be coming down Griffin Road.
Uh, it's going to, it's coming from behind Walgreens on Weston Road, so it's not, not even a half a mile.
Yeah, but how are they going to get there?
They're going to come down Weston Road, they're going to make a right on Griffin, and they're going to make a left right into the property. So, they're on, they're on there for 100 yards.
Well, that's what I, we make sure that it's stipulated, the only way they can enter that property is from Griffin Road.
Okay.
Because otherwise, you know, what's going to happen?
No problem. I got it. Yeah, absolutely. Dykes Road's a problem, yeah.
The one thing that I wanted to see in this agreement, that I don't see, but I have not had, I just got it handed in.
Yeah, all of it's just got it.
So, so, so I haven't...
We all just got it.
Yeah, but I want to make sure that, that there is an end date to this as well. In other words, I don't know what it is, 12 months, 18 months?
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think this is going to be a, an enhancement to the view of our town, by having this pile of dirt there, okay? And so, I don't want it sitting there forever, or for years and years. I think that after 18 months, there should be an out clause, if we choose to continue for another six months, maybe every six months, we have the opportunity to end it, and if, and if we do, we can dispose of, or keep the...
Okay, what's there?
The fill, whatever's there, because I just don't want this to go on and on and on.
No, no, I get it.
So, so that's the one thing I don't see in there, that I'd like to see in this.
Okay. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, if I could chime in, and I have not read this yet?
I haven't either.
Okay, so, I...
We all just got it.
No, no, I know, I know, but the couple of things I want to point out, one is the entranceway that we're talking about off of Griffin Road, that was built, it drops off.
They're going to build that.
And you're talking about putting thousands and tons of trucks over it, there's got to be an obvious access road built there, before we even contemplate that. That should be in the agreement, you know, to improve that area. Maybe something permanent, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
I would put severe restrictions on 163rd and on Dykes Road, that they not have any, there's no way they can go in that area, you know, before I would even, you know, consider this, I would want to have, you know, some sort of reassurance that the residents are not looking at dump trucks all day long, you know, or something like, something of that effect. And then, uh...
It's across the street from the nursery.
Huh?
The five acres on 163rd is across the street from the nursery.
Okay, yeah. Then you've got the park, right next to it. Do we have fill that spills onto the park?
No.
What are the ramifications behind that, if it does?
Yeah.
You know, or something to that?
No, I gave them my, what was it, that document that I gave them, related to the site and boring samples and whatnot?
Yeah, it was just the geological study.
So, I gave them a geological copy of the geological study we had done, that shows boring samples and whatnot, and showed where the site was, and the boundaries, and all that stuff. So, they have that.
But, how, how quickly does this have to be executed, or not executed?
Sooner the better.
Is this something that can wait a month while we research it?
Um...
Two weeks?
I would hope by next meeting.
Okay. I mean, we can have it researched by next meeting, and then...
Yeah, I would hope.
Come to some kind of a decision, because I think there's going to be a greater impact than we think, on the neighborhood.
Andy, you want to jump in?
I'm kind of fearful of what, what the residents are going to go through, depending on the number of truckloads, I think we need to...
Well, I only see us getting a bunch of phone calls, like, what are we doing there?
Oh, I see that right off the bat.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's a newsletter article, if I've ever seen one. You know, don't flip out.
Right, right.
A temporary situation.
Absolutely.
But I mean...
So, I see that as far as the phone calls, and us just saying, well, we're storing dirt for a little while, but we're paying, being paid a lot of money to do it.
Yeah, Mayor, if I, if I can jump in for a moment. I recognize this all hit you, really now, just during the meeting, it got, it got to my email late today. Recognize, this is not an agreement, this is a letter of interest, from somebody who wants to move forward with it. The concerns that you've expressed tonight, I've certainly heard, and if the numbers are justified as we go forward, the agreement that Keith will draw up will include those concerns that certainly council has.
Okay.
Good.
So, we can direct Keith or Andy, and then move forward to continue to research this?
No pun intended.
Okay. All right. Marty, you got that? Okay.
I'm not there yet.
All right. Other than that, the Easter egg hunt, out Saturday at the Rolling Oaks Barn, it's a great event, it's a lot of fun, if you all have got kids, trust me, they'll have a blast. If you all haven't been, you should go, just to see how, what an event it is, it's really cool. Other than that, wish everybody a great happy Easter, and all the other stuff going on. So, Keith, you're up to bat, buddy?
Sure. By the way, on this lease, just to let you know, the one that we just got, it's a one-year lease with one-year extension, that they can terminate monthly. Obviously, my response to that would be, a one-year lease and 30-day extensions, that can be terminated by either party.
I'm good with that.
So, you know, the way that they wrote it, it's not correct. Just so that I know, the issues that we're looking at is, Marty's going to look at the taxation issues, the other issues that I heard to discuss are, number of loads of fill delivered per day, per week, et cetera.
No, I don't know his number of loads per day, per week, I think they want him more keep it on Griffin Road, and no, no local roads, 163rd. I mean, when you leave their site, they're going to take, they're going to come out on the Griffin Road, excuse me, Weston Road, they're going to make a right turn, they're going to go to the light at Griffin, they're going to make a right turn, and they're going to make the very first left, which is a left-hand turn lane, into our site. There's a cutout in the curb there.
All right, so then, you'll draw a map showing the...
The, how to travel.
Yeah, I think you have to make a U-turn, actually.
That they will be required to go to get there. We'd have to specify the hours of fill delivery, the location that has to be on the property, how they come in and out, which is what you just said. Paved access road, environmental issues, and, and those are the primary issues that I see, just sitting here, getting this in two minutes. I'm sorry?
Putting it back to which one?
Oh, yeah, and restoration of the property thereafter. Also, you know, based on the number of loads, I don't know these streets, where exactly we're talking about, but someone should do an analysis, because these rock trucks may rip up those roads. So, the question is, is also to look at insurance, you know, fixing our roads, et cetera, when they're complete, with whatever they're doing over there.
Listen, you're drawing up the contract.
Yeah. So, okay, I got, I got that one done. You all brought up the building code issue, on people failure to get permits. I have an initial suggestion that doesn't require anything, it's just basically a direction from the council. And that is, I think that a lot of, well, probably guess 50%, maybe more, of the issues can be resolved by a simple direction to building department, and to code department, by saying, if, in the event, a contractor builds without a permit, not only are they going to be charged the double fee, which is currently on our books, but you are to report them to the state. And I guarantee you, that it will quickly be known, that if you build without a permit in the town, and you're a contractor, you're going to be reported, and that, I believe, personally, will slow down a lot of the issues that you have. Because I do not believe we're reporting them today, which is a big part of the problem. So, something you may want to consider as an initial fix, is just simple direction to the town on how to handle it. So, I just want to mention that for your consideration, either this week or next.
I think we should be doing that anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good, I think it's a good recommendation. My, my, I mean, I think that's good. I think there's a lot, I think there's a lot of that going on, that's not being done by contractors, that's, so...
Well, right, that's the secondary level, so that's why I said maybe 50%, maybe less.
But about 50% is...
But if that's the direction of the council, then, you know, Robert, Robert's here, and he can speak with Cap tomorrow about it.
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, the, so that's building...
I thought we were doing that already.
Right. So, right.
Okay, the next issue that I need to discuss is nurseries, because you all brought it up, so now I'm going to bring it up. For years, going back to 1968, many of the zoning categories in the town, rural estates, probably rural ranches, rural states, rural ranches, allowed nurseries. If you remember, when the town was formed, there were some other zoning categories that the town essentially got rid of, to make everything really RER, remember there was much more ag when we first formed, et cetera. But, there may be a situation now, where, because we were so desirous of being rural, and allowing agricultural uses, that we are now one of the lone places in Broward County that allows it as of right, which is why you're experiencing much more problems 17 years later, than you were originally, as it relates to these uses. So, without the killing the messenger, just throwing it out there, after hearing what you're saying, the council may wish to consider a code amendment, and say that any nursery, new nursery, this wouldn't affect existing nurseries, which would be vested, but any new nurseries would have to get a special exception of the council, to approve it on a particular piece of property...
Yes.
And come up with certain criteria, that you will consider to allow a new nursery, including size of the parcel, you know, location of the access roads, whether or not it's surrounded by residential homes, et cetera. So, you know, I know it sort of goes against the grain, even my grain fundamentally, on rural lifestyle, but I constantly am now hearing more and more issues...
Yep.
With outside nurseries, who are not longtime rancher nurseries, coming into the ranches, opening up shop, and now having conflicts with the neighbors that we've never seen before. So, it may behoove you all to think about that, and if it's something you may want to consider, send it to the Complan Advisory Board, and give them direction to come up with some protocol, and how to deal with this in the future.
I have a quick question. What is the difference, Keith, between a nursery and Home Depot?
Well, on the ranches, not much.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, if it's not grown on your property, how do you consider yourself a nursery? You know, Home Depot has everything you could possibly want, you know? And that's where Home Depot should stay, over there. So, with what was done to the property, he ain't growing anything, he's bringing it all in.
Who changed the code?
I don't know that it was.
The code has not changed.
The code, the code hasn't been changed. We're in a mode that, as Keith has mentioned, that it's been 17, going on 18 years, and, you know, this is part of growing pains, and having this problem, and in the last couple of years, we've been getting more and more complaints of residents related to nurseries, nursery business, all that kind of stuff. A lot of nurseries, what they do is they expand and get into, you know, maintenance of property, and then they have trailers, and mowers, and equipment, and all the other stuff, which is not part of a nursery business.
The only code change we did was to make it more restrictive, and to limit the mulching.
On August of 2017, that's what I heard. What was that?
Was that the mulching? Was that the mulching?
The town passed a law to prohibit nurseries from mulching. They were, they made it more restrictive, not less.
Yeah, made it, we made it tougher, not, not, we have not made it any easier.
What is it with the rule?
Doug, Doug.
Could you come up to the mic?
Doug, we're not supposed to be going back and forth on this.
No, I know, but we can if we want.
Right, no, so, the only purpose for my suggestion is, is to throw it out there, if the council is interested in seeing, you know, maybe it's time to, if you think there may be time to put some additional limitations in, I'm asking if that's the case, for you to give direction to your Complan Board to work on this, to bring back something for your consideration formally, if you think it's time to do that.
I think it's time to do that.
I think it doesn't hurt for the Complan Board to take a look at it, and come back with a recommendation.
Retroactive, so I think the council...
No. No. Yeah, no way to do that, unfortunately.
No, I think we should put it, put it as a directive to the Complan Board, and see what they come back with us, come back with, you know, to us on that, going through Jeff Katam's office, and the whatnot. And then, we can kick it around till we're blue in the face.
All right, I agree too.
And hopefully come up with something.
Yeah, we're on board.
All right, thank you.
Freddie, you want to bring that up now? Yeah, Freddie's on board too. All good.
All right, final legal note.
Final, you got a bunch of legal stuff.
I'm, uh, may a couple. First off, for those of you who don't follow, Pembroke Pines swore in to new, to commissioners yesterday, congratulations to both of them. Personally, exceptionally pleased that Tom Good got elected. Tom was a wonderful South Broward Drainage District Commissioner, who was always a voice of reason, and dealt with the ranches with dignity and respect, and I can only hope that he will continue to excel in that role, now being a Commissioner of Pembroke Pines. So, I'd like to formally congratulate him. As it relates to Pembroke Pines, yesterday, we had the privilege of going to a motion in court, in which the town of Southwest Ranches sought to consolidate our case with Correction Corporation of America, Core Civic Group, is their new name. So, essentially, what the goal was, is now that Core Civic Group, won at the Supreme Court level, and now just basically needs to prove damages, they're at the same stage that we are in the case, meaning that, you know, we know they breached our contracts, and now we need to prove damages, and as such, our... and now we need to prove damages, and as such, our, our claims are, are now identical, okay? Uh, also, from a, a, a real perspective of the town, having a billion-dollar company sitting next to you at trial is not a bad thing, you know, especially when they're paying for, uh, to be next to you at trial. So, uh, there were tremendous advantages in teaming up together with them. Uh, yesterday was the hearing, uh, it was supposed to be 15 minutes, I think it went well over an hour, or about an hour. Um, I can tell you that Pines, uh, with their three attorneys, opposed this motion with some of the more vigorous vehement language that I have, uh, been accustomed to in court, so much so that an intern was there and the intern was instructed that that's not really how you behave in court, so don't, uh, watch what transpired. Uh, we all laughed, uh, without any indication really which way it was going, uh, but understanding that our case, uh, it was supposed to go to, uh, the, the trial, uh, essentially jury selection started next week and then it went to trial in April for a two-week trial. Um, this morning, um, before noon, uh, the judge, uh, handwrote a motion that said, uh, granted, uh, the cases shall be consolidated for trial and our cases removed for the April docket. This, to me, is excellent news for the town, uh, because it puts a, a tremendous, um, advantage to us by having a partner like Core Civic to be able to help, uh, direct this litigation and fund this litigation. Um, what this means in timeframe is that the trial now will probably move to November, December, maybe the first month of the year, because Core Civic just needs to play catch-up now. They need to read all of our depositions, all of the motions, and they need to get ready for the case. So, um, to me, this was a, a very important next step. It's one that, uh, I don't even know how Pines is gonna tell their commissioners what transpired, but it was a huge, um, uh, step moving forward for the town, and to me, one that, uh, met all requirements of law and was the proper way to proceed, uh, in this case, so we were very happy about that. Um, and other than that, that's it, Mayor.
Awesome.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, there is one more thing.
Yeah.
Yes.
I thought there was.
Uh, Council, I don't know what you're talking about, so you'll remind me in a second. Councilmember Schroeder made a motion, uh, to appoint this individual to a board, never had a second. So, if we could just do a second and a quick, okay, roll call then.
Second and a roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, now, as it relates to that, just for, for clarification, that board is constituted with seven members, now you have six on it.
Mm-hmm.
So, so you may wish to...
Add one more.
Add one more.
Okay.
Exactly. So, that's the answer there. What was the other issue that I forgot?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I thought there was another one.
I'm good for now.
Okay. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just a couple of things. Uh, there's obviously been a lot of discussion on the nursery next door. I have met with the mayor and, and with, with Mario, just want to assure you all that we'll continue to work with the neighbors and with code to certainly enforce the rules that we have, to make sure that they play by those rules, and, uh, we'll do everything we can to make sure they're as, as good a neighbor as we can make them be. Uh, we'll remain accessible to you and, and we'll work to communicate, certainly do the best we can. We have to operate within our code, we will enforce that code to the best of our ability. A couple other things, I just wanted to let you know that the governor did sign the budget, and special thanks to the mayor and Councilmember Schroeder, who went up to Tallahassee during Broward days, uh, the town was able to secure $500,000 for various drainage projects around town.
Yeah.
Uh, the fire station update, that continues, uh, I've got some specifics on that that I can share with you, if you bear with me, I just have to double-check the notes on that, but I would just want to give you all an update on that, and, uh, let's see, site plan has been finalized and approved, the modular company has initiated the permitting process, Broward County Health Department has issued their preliminary comments, the design team is finalizing their responses and will resubmit in the next couple of days back to them. Uh, the building department won't sign off on the drawings until we get the Broward County stamp, so we're, we're working on that, making that a very high priority. Uh, we're gonna submit anyway to the building department, so try to run those processes concurrently. We've received correspondence from FPNL yesterday, uh, they're asking for some additional information, which we're in the process of supplying to them, and, uh, we are continuing to move this project as, as quickly as we can. Uh, staff is meeting on this, on, uh, certainly on a weekly basis to update all concerned, but obviously, as, as things happen on a day-to-day basis, we're, we're jumping on it a- as those things arise, so I just want to make you aware of that, we're continuing to work on that. Uh, the only other thing I wanted...
Keith, I'm gonna come back to you in a minute.
Sorry, Mayor?
I'm gonna say, I'm saying Keith, I'm gonna come back to you in a minute.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted to touch on is, there was some discussion before on that Pines project that was on the agenda, I've discussed it with some of you individually. I did ask Rod and Russell to do some research on that today, and Russell has some additional information that he can share with you, if you'll indulge me on, uh, the administrative report.
Sure, go ahead.
And that, that's all I have, once Russell's done, Mayor.
Bless you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, uh, basically, I'm passing down some documentation that we were able to glean from Pembroke Pines' website related to the, um, RFP that they put out there for this water loop, looping system, this water looping project. Um, the, the RFP is over 200 pages long, I didn't want to necessarily print out all the pages, but it kinda gave you some of the highlights. Um, but if you look at the last page, there's a ledger-sized document that kinda shows the service area that they're proposing to, um, to, to put these lines into, and if you look, it basically is, um, US 27 from Sheridan all the way up to Griffin Road and looping the properties that are adjacent to US 27. All of these properties that would be in there are, are Town of Southwest Ranches properties. Um, I'm not gonna speculate as to, uh, exactly what they're up to, but I think you can draw your own conclusions. Um, they were very, uh, I would say cryptic in some of the language that they were using in the RFP. Um, again, I'll let you draw your own conclusions as to why that is, um, but some of the concerns that were brought up when Rod and I discussed this were, um, they're basically laying pipe down in properties adjacent to the town that clearly would be our service area, per se. And so, um, we don't know if they're trying to block any future, uh, lines from being put in, we're not quite sure what the purpose of the project is. Um, they contend that it's to enhance the service area for their own utility, there's no way for us to really know if that's really the case or not, but we just wanted to provide this information that we found for you tonight.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I have a million questions, but I want that no one can answer.
No, no one can answer, yeah, I get that.
Find out more info.
But, but I will tell you...
How can we police that?
You know, um, I urge all of you to reach out to Tom Good on any question that you may have, uh, directly, Commissioner to Commissioner, and I think you'll find a very open dialogue.
Absolutely. Well, I, I wanted to thank Dee and Steve for coming last night to that swearing-in, appreciate it. Um, Keith, um, two things back to you, any word on the fire truck issue and any word on our proper stolen real estate that, where maybe we can just get the, uh, the lean amount back, at least?
Okay, uh, as, uh, the, the real estate's a much bigger headache, so I'm not gonna bore everyone with a full legal, um, dissertation on, uh, priority of title and everything else, 'cause it gets very complex. As relates to the fire truck, um, we drafted a letter, then the issue got worse, we drafted another letter, then the issue got worse, and so we drafted yet another letter, and this one I actually had sent to Andy, uh, today, uh, for review, um, and so we're hopeful we're gonna get out another letter on, uh, Monday, um, because what's happening is that the local individuals here have no idea what their legal counsel is telling us, so they're not on the same page at all. And, and it's causing a lot of issues, because when the chief's bringing it in to be repaired, saying that, you know, there, there's an issue, there's an issue, they're saying, what issue? We don't know what you're talking about, yet we have a letter from their legal counsel saying, yeah, this, there was a recall on this item and get it fixed. So, um, you know, I'm glad we waited a little bit on responsive letter, because things changed three times since, uh, we were gonna get the initial, the second letter out. So, hopefully by Monday, we'll have it, if you want a copy, I'll be happy to send it to you tomorrow.
Okay. So, uh, how long we wait until they don't take an action, we have to sue?
Um...
This was supposed to be done in January.
Right, I mean, my, my, my hope is that, uh, we make it clear in this letter that if this is not resolved immediately, we're, we're going to court. Um, one good news, uh, about this is, they have a contract that they gave us, um, that had choice of law and forum in Delaware or wherever they're based, North Dakota, somewhere crazy, um, but we never signed it, and they never signed it, so I'm gonna argue here.
Okay, all right, good.
What is, what is this, I don't need the whole, whole conversation, but what piece of land are you talking about in the other issue? I don't even know what you're talking about.
It was a code, it was a, to make a long story short, there was code enforcement action in which we foreclosed on a barn, okay? Uh, the person buried a horse in their backyard, and, and, long story short, it went to the, we owned it, it went to the courthouse steps, and the court assigned it to another person, who then sold it to another person, who sold it to yet another person. So, it is a hodgepodge of issues for a property that can never be developed, because it's so small, anyway. So, uh, it's now with its rightful landowner, because it's coupled with the property that it's attached to, so now it makes a proper-sized property.
Right.
So, from a municipal standpoint, it's not bad what transpired, but it was wrong of the court to have sold the property that the town foreclosed on.
We had a, we had a, what, a forty-seven thousand dollar judgment on it?
This is the one in Sunshine Ranch?
It is in Sunshine Ranches, next to Mark Stevens' house, it's in the back.
On, on Hancock?
No, off of, uh, Holliday.
Holliday, the back.
Oh, off of Holliday.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I think, uh, yep, number eight.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the use of funds from a new emergency line of credit to be used to reimburse the town for costs incurred in connection with Hurricane Irma for debris removal and related expenses of the project, declaring its official intention to finance the cost of the project through issuance of a note for a new emergency line of credit and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed, back to us, any questions here?
Uh, Marty, do you have any comments on it?
He said no.
Sorry, all right.
You're famous, Marty.
He doesn't need to.
Well, no, for any residents that are watching or whatever, I think it'd be good to get a little explanation.
All right, Marty?
Oh, yes, okay.
Wake up.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Councilmembers, for the record, my name is Martin Sherwood, Town Financial Administrator. Uh, what we are do- doing tonight is protecting the town with the future line of credit that will be coming back to you, uh, next month, we expect in April, uh, a more favorable line of credit, uh, hopefully, uh, with lower interest rates, but we all know interest rates, uh, are, are on the upside and moving, uh, at least two more times by the end of the year. However, uh, we expect that to be a significant saving, so what this resolution allows us is to extend backward 60 days, back to January 21st, for the expenditures that we have spent, uh, on a cash disbursement basis, which represents about 1.2 million, and will allow us to draw from our forthcoming new line of credit, uh, which we expect to be at a lower interest rate. Uh, presently, we only have 1.6 million outstanding with Centennial Bank of our 4.5 million, uh, line of credit, uh, which was at 4.25 percent, uh, with the, uh, recent change in the prime rate, it'll be four and a half percent. Uh, the new forthcoming rent rate will be at least 100 basis points lower, um, and will enable us to draw at closing, going back to January 21st, at the new lower rate, and, uh, that's what this rezo does. It doesn't tell, uh, uh, or, or determine the line of credit we're going to have, it just keeps our options open to borrow money at a lower rate pending the outcome of the new line of credit.
Thank you, Marty. Um, just, I just wanna just thank you for, I know you've had, put in an incredible amount of time and negotiations on this whole renegotiation of the line of credit, it's gonna benefit the town, uh, greatly, so thank you for all that, all that work and effort.
Thank you, and all that work will be coming forthcoming, uh, and transparent with the April agenda.
Awesome, thank you. All right, call the question, Russell, if you would.
Can we do public comment?
I did public comment.
Oh, gee, go to...
All right, I'll open it back up. Public comment, go ahead.
I wanna know...
Get to the mic. You gotta stand up here.
You gotta come to the mic, please.
Gotta give your name and address.
We don't know who you are.
My can, my 50th place. Uh, I wanna know, in this resolution, it says the town for, will be reimbursed for the emergency line of credit for used for cost incorrected. What's incorrected? Hello?
In connection?
It's a typo.
I don't understand that word.
Typo.
It's a typo.
I want Marty to explain, I thought maybe it was some kind of technical...
It's the script, there's error, that'll be corrected for the record.
I don't want anybody to be reimbursed for being incorrected.
Thank you.
All right, call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number nine.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an interlocal agreement with Broward County, Florida, for the use of temporary debris management sites following a natural or man-made disaster, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed, back to us, anyone have any additional comments? Seeing none, call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 10.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an amendment to the interlocal agreement with Broward County, providing for the division and distribution of the proceeds of the original gas tax, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute said agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed, back to us, anyone have any questions? Well, I do. Do we have any idea how much money this is gonna be, Marty?
Yes, miss, as indicated, uh, our population increased, but our population increased smaller than the overall Broward County population. So, due to that, it impacts our gas, uh, taxes, uh, slot, very, very little, $397. It'll be lower than the previous year, yes. The, uh, budgeted, the adopted in budget, it was $79,359, so it'll, uh, reduce it to approximately $79,000. Very small, that's what occurs when our population goes up, but a smaller amount in relationship to the total population in Broward County.
Okay, thank you. Call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Approval of minutes, number 11.